Okay, we'll call it to order this November the 20th, 2019 meeting of the Franklin County Commission. Role call?
Commissioner Stottemeyer.
Present.
Commissioner Waymire.
Present.
Chair Howard.
Present.
Vice Chair Dickinson.
Present.
Commissioner Dunn.
Present.
You'd all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing for the invocation. They'll be led by Pastor Leonard Chesbrough of the New Life in Christ Church.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Let's pray. Heavenly Father God, we thank you for this day you've given us. We thank you for many blessings you bestow upon us. Thanksgiving is more than just about turkey, it's about what you do for us, Lord. You sacrificed your son for us so we could have life and have life more abundantly. Lord, I pray, God, we're thankful for our county workers, we're thankful for all the people that serve this county, and just bless each one. We ask your protection up on the Sheriff's Department, we ask your protection up on the Fire Department, we ask your protection on the Police Department, we ask your protection up on EMTs and different ones that serve us, Lord, and just bless each family, bless each one in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Darren. Oh, you're kidding me. My computer just went off. Okay, anything on correspondence and organizational business?
No, sir.
Okay, it takes us to public comment. A citizen desiring to speak on an item not on an agenda may do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes and the commission will not take action to discuss items at this time. Discussions should be limited to matters of County Commission business and public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or on pending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date.
Joel Goodman? Come up and state your name and address for the commission.
I'm Lowell Goodman. I live at 2228 Haskell Road. I'd like to address a little issue that happened last Thursday. Just north of Haskell Road on Louisiana Road, an attempt was made to raise the elevation of the road. It was a great idea, needed it, been washing out. Only problem was, road department brought up dirt, dumped it on the top of the gravel, didn't roll it in, didn't pack it in. It's a bog now. This evening when it rains, it'll be impassable. I was here seven weeks ago to address the conditions of our county roads. And quite frankly, nothing has changed. I'm looking at you five now. It's your fault. He's not getting it done. There's been numerous people here addressing their issues with the roads. Nothing's happening. And I'm looking at you folks to address it and get something done. This waste of money Thursday is ridiculous. Now it's going to have to be all dug out and redone again. Because you drive through it and you sink about four or five inches. That's not the way to build roads around here. So I'm looking at you folks to take this situation and address it and fix it. Thank you.
Takes us to the consent agenda. Items today on the consent agenda that need considering and approved are claim vouchers in the amount of $868,070.94, tax change orders in the amount of a positive $75.44, and commission meeting minutes for November the 6th, 2019. And also need to consider and approve the solicitation of bid for financing of three 2019 12-14 AWD motor graders. Look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I would make that motion.
Second.
Motion in a second.
Commissioner Stottemeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Chair Howard.
Yes. Okay, takes us to items of business. First item of business today is to consider and approve the appointment of Dr. Ryan Cobb's to the Fourth Judicial District Corrections Advisory Board for a term of two years beginning November the 20th, 2019, and ending November the 20th, 2021. Dustin?
Good morning, Commissioners. Dustin Brown in Community Corrections. Joining me today is Dr. Ryan Cobb, the Superintendent of USD 290, who is seeking appointment to the Fourth Judicial District Corrections Advisory Board. That board is currently without a member that should be representing education. Statutorily, we need that member, and so Dr. Cobb's has expressed interest. The other members that are currently on the board have supported this appointment as well, so today we are seeking your appointment.
Yeah, I served on FCDC with Dr. Cobb's and worked at the school with Dr. Cobb's for several years, and no doubt in my mind that would be an excellent choice. Any other comments on this?
Go over for the benefit. Anybody watching real quick what the advisory board does?
Absolutely. So the Fourth Judicial District Corrections Advisory Board is something that's put in place statutorily to oversee community corrections. Community corrections is a state and local partnership. We follow state standards as well as county policies that are in place. There's a lot of things that we have to do that are mandated by the state, so this advisory board is in place to make sure that we're doing those things as we're supposed to. But also, this advisory board is a group of people who should be putting some input in as to what practices they see best practices in their fields, whether it be mental health, education, law enforcement, et cetera. And so, somebody representing the field of education would have that voice and that input as to what they see from the schools. If there's any trends or any current practices that we should be aware of from education, we want to have that input.
Does the Corrections Advisory Board cover both adult and juveniles?
It does.
Awesome.
Nothing else? I'd like to make the motion to appoint Dr. Ryan Cobb to the Fourth Judicial District Corrections Advisory Board for the term of two years.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Okay.
Commissioner Waymire.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer.
Yes.
Chair Howard.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Ryan. Okay, second item today. Consider and approve revitalization properties for approval. Janet?
So, as you guys can see from the memo that we've received from the City of Ottawa, there's a number of properties that are being remodeled and built around the city of Ottawa that meet all the current requirements of the Neighborhood Revitalization Program. So when we review these properties, when the commission reviews these properties, that doesn't necessarily mean that they are going to be in the program. That just means they meet all the preliminary requirements, and then they have to complete the project and meet the ending requirements of the project. So these properties have all met the preliminary requirements and are ready to move forward in the program, and then they will send me the supporting documents at the end when they meet the ending requirements. So they're just seeking your approval on these today to enter the program if they meet all the requirements.
We've done this for quite a while and seems to be working very well, benefiting everyone involved. Any other questions on this? Would not look for a motion to approve the revitalization properties.
Motion to approve.
Motion is a second.
Second.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire.
Yes.
Chair Howard.
Yes. Okay, item number three. Consider and approve the Heritage Trust Fund application. Brandon?
Morning. Wayne Duderstad has been working hard on that heritage application for the clock in the courthouse. He had a couple of questions for us, so the document that was sent to you guys was...
Incomplete.
Incomplete. I was hoping to have a completed one by today's meeting, but we didn't quite get there. So this is just kind of a first viewing, and then when we get those questions answered, we'll be looking for a signature probably from you, Mr. Howard, on that, so we can get that submitted. The due date for that is December 2nd, so it's coming up pretty quick.
And frankly, this isn't something that had to come before the board. I asked Brandon to bring it here. It gives us a platform, one, to thank Wayne for all the hard work he's put into this. Certainly, something he did not have to do, but he has been incredibly helpful with this. Janet's been incredibly helpful. Brandon's been helpful. I think we've got a real good shot at this. So I think the packet that we've put together is great. We will finish out the application. If you want it to come back and you would like to formally approve it, you certainly can, but I'm also authorized as your legal representative to sign it as well. But just wanted to let you know where it's at. We're about to wrap it up, and we'll take it from there, so...
Yeah, I started looking over it. It's not like a one paragraph thing. There's a lot to this and everything. I personally think it's something we need to do, and I don't see any reason that it needs to come back here. I think if we have a consensus that, have you just take care of it once you have it ready, then sign it and go with it, is my opinion. I see Don nodding.
Yeah, but I do say I'm really glad that he jumped in to do this because this is very extensive, and somebody that doesn't know what they're doing, I'm sure that he made it good for us to do it.
Well, and he's successfully done this before, so he's a great resource to use.
Talking sixty-some thousand, maybe eighty-some thousand to totally do this project?
It was in the seventy-thousand-dollar range.
And it would definitely...
Got the total project cost listed as eighty-five thousand two hundred and sixty, and the grant request is sixty-eight thousand two hundred and eight.
So if we get this, that would knock a big chunk of that out. If we don't get this, it may be sitting like it is for a while.
You could try to restart again, though.
I believe we have a consensus for you to take care of when it gets there, so...
Thanks, Brandon.
Thank you, Brandon.
Derek, on these kind of deals where there's, you know, fifty pages of documents and you can't read them, should they be in our agenda? Have all those documents like that? You can't see them and you can't read them.
Are they not attached to your agenda?
Like, there's some written, handwritten...
It's attached, but you can't read it because...
But it is part of the grant, the application, though.
Like, it's too small? Is that... What do you mean, it's attached but you can't read it?
It just didn't scan real clean.
Oh.
Yeah, when it scanned it, you can't read.
Okay.
You can't read all the handwriting, and I didn't know if it was necessary to be...
Just work on the contrast on the scan, and it ought to be readable.
Okay, yeah. I mean, I can get you guys a clean scan. That's certainly no issue. Yeah, that's no problem. I don't know that, I'm not sure what the handwritten portions were, or if those were just letters of support, or...
Want to look at it?
Well, I forgot it.
I think they're photos. I think it's what...
No, 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 no. There's like four, five pages of handwriting, but it's from the deed book.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's from the deed book, and that's why, yeah, so...
It's definitely wrote a long time ago. It's just really heavy cursing. It's a lot of it.
It's going to read it.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I can get you a clean deed so that you can...
I didn't know if it was necessary to be there.
Well, he must have felt it was necessary to attach it, the information that was on there.
It's something that needs to be attached to the grant application, but I don't know that it's, you know, the details on the deed specifically. I mean, it's not, there's nothing about that particular deed or the language in it that I guess is pertinent for the board's purposes. That's just to let them know where ownership of the clock tower is.
It's just an attachment?
Yeah. Yeah, so...
Okay. Moving on to item number four. Consider and approve an extension to the 2019 Pomona Law Enforcement Contract. Sheriff?
What's before you is just a contract extension. As you're aware, Pomona contracts, that council contracts with this board for law enforcement services, which are provided by the Sheriff's Office. That contract currently is set to expire at the end of this month. There was a desire on behalf of the city clerk and our county clerk to have the contract run consistent with our fiscal year, which is also the calendar year. So this is simply just to extend the current contract by one month so that we can get back on that, on the proper cycle. Don't know how it got off for sure, but all this does is keeps everything in place, but it allows my office to continue to provide those services for the remainder of this year. There's no price tag attached to this at all. It's just a matter of kind of getting it back on track. And this was approved by the Pomona City Council out there in November 4th, council meeting.
So it'll be a one-month extension?
Yes, sir.
Any questions on that? Look for a motion to approve one-month extension to the 2019 Pomona Law Enforcement Contract.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion is second.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Chair Howard.
Yes. Okay, item number five. Consider and approve the 2020 Pomona Law Enforcement Contract.
Okay. This contract will run from January 1 through December 31 of 2020. There are a couple other, aside from the date changes, what, one thing that changes in here is the due dates on the, on their payments. The City of Pomona will still continue to make quarterly payments, but all four of those payments will happen. They will make those payments, and the county will receive those payments all within the 2020 fiscal year. So it kind of cleans things up on, for record-keeping on both entities. The amount does increase to, the total contract cost is $63,604, and so that reflects an increase over the current contract of $1,246 over the year. I have also presented this to the Pomona City Council, and they did approve it at the same meeting there on November 4th. It does not change any of the services that we provide. Just as a reminder, this contract, it is a, it's a contract for services. We are in no way, do we work for the City of Pomona during this time. It's a complete contract, so everyone still stays under operational control of the Sheriff's Office. But as part of this, I do meet regularly with the city council, the mayor, and the city clerk to make sure that we're providing the services that they are contracting for, and kind of just work with them as best we can on things.
You said it'll be paid in four payments over 2020?
That's correct. Those payments are sent, I believe, to the clerk's office, and then those go in as a general fund revenue.
You have to list all the officers in your organization?
I do. Well, any certified law enforcement that would be making, that would be enforcing those city ordinances have to be on the roster. So when we have a change, I update that, provide that to the city clerk. They provide us a, we provide our people a commission card. They're certified, you know, commissioned to do, to do law enforcement in Franklin County. They can enforce state statutes by that. But this contract allows us to enforce the city ordinances of the city, for the City of Pomona. So they have to issue a commission card signed by the mayor to each of our members. It's a legality hoop to jump through, but that's what that's about, that this does not take away from any authority that deputies already have. We can still enforce all the state ordinances. This just adds to the fact that they can also enforce city ordinances over there.
Other questions on that?
No questions on that, but I do see that you are participating in No Shave November.
I am, yeah. My wife's ready for the end of the month.
Right.
Okay, would look for a motion to approve the 2020 contract with Pomona in the amount of $63,604 to be paid in four payments, so over the 2020 fiscal year. Have a motion to approve that contract?
I would make that motion.
Motion is in a second.
Commissioner Stottemeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Chair Howard.
Yes, thanks, Chair. Item number six. Consider for approval accepting the proposal from Kelo Construction to perform work on Tennessee Road and Rock Creek Road. David?
Commissioners, we have the opportunity to fix a couple of locations that have given us trouble for a long time. We've got a couple of areas on Tennessee Road near the bridge south of Reno Road, where we've got, that's, there's a quarry not too far away, so that receives a lot of heavy truck traffic. So in the northbound lanes, we've got some wheel rutting, and we've also got some potholes that need to be addressed. And then on Rock Creek Road, there's a bridge, where's it at? East of Oregon Road, down in the bottoms where it has flooded a couple of times this year. We have similar situation where we have some wheel rutting in the, well, in both lanes, actually, and some potholes that we've tried to fix with cold-packed patch and even some hot mix asphalt. None of that has held up, and so we have an opportunity. Kelo still has their asphalt plant operating, and they have a little bit of time to slip in and take care of these two areas. And so I would ask that you approve this proposal from them. We'll have some leveling course in a couple of the locations, and then we'll have some full-depth patch in others that should hopefully take care of these situations for a few years anyway. We'll probably always have issues in these locations, but this will certainly take care of a problem spot now before winter gets here, before it, you know, gets intense. So I would look for approval to move forward with that.
The total cost of this is?
Thirty-three thousand one hundred and fifty dollars.
Janet and I have been working with David, primarily Janet. We're meeting with him on Friday to discuss certain budget things. Suffice to say, though, his budget is in great shape, so this is, this is something that can be done very easily from a financial perspective.
I know the guys have tried several times on the one section there on Rock, and it just, you know, it's just, you know, they just can't do good enough jobs. They just won't allow it. And that's flooded four times this year, which hopefully never happened again, but it has. And I can see what you're talking about would be the only way we're probably going to get it underhand on it.
I'd like to make a motion to approve. Good. Have a motion to approve the proposal from Kelo Construction in the amount of $33,150 for work on Tennessee Road and Rock Creek Road. A second.
Commissioner Waymire.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer.
Yes.
Chair Howard.
Yes. Okay, takes us to staff reports. Derek?
Last week, I got the final draft of the tax sale from our attorney who's conducting that for us. Given the Cove's properties being on it, it is a massive document. That being said, I've reviewed it. I think it looks great. My understanding is that the filing is imminent. If it doesn't happen this week, then I think it certainly will next, and that will start the process. And so I know the city's been working to come up with a mechanism to wipe out the specials on those properties so that they become more marketable. So hopefully, that all goes off without a hitch, and maybe we get some development going out there. We received a check here, it's been a week or so ago now, from Advent Health for $35,000 for the first three months of rent for Suite 1 and 2 over there. I bring that up. They've given us a lot of compliments. I know they are incredibly grateful for allowing to you, for allowing them to use the space. I do want to put this back on your radar, though, because we've talked about a remodel there. I mean, obviously, this isn't a permanent home for HR. We've got Casey Comfortable. I mean, she has a primary office out at the Visitor Center, and she's got some space in the old courthouse, but I think I would like to discuss at a study session coming up what a potential remodel of some of that space looks like, because I do think we could set it up in a way that's much better for us moving forward. Part of that is trying to assess whether or not Advent wants any of that space. I'm struggling to get a straight answer out of them there, but I will continue to try and do that. But just know that that's something that we'll probably put before you here, oh, in the next month or so, to at least start that discussion. This is, I believe this is Casey's third week, the start of her third week on the job. She has already got far more to do than she can possibly handle in a short term, so we're happy with that. We knew that would be the case, but it seems like with each passing day, we have department heads or electeds, it's like the light bulbs going on, and they're realizing, oh, wow, like this is, we could totally utilize this position to do this, or... And so I think, I think Casey's going to be very busy, but she's doing a great job. So I'm looking forward to seeing what we can accomplish there. Monday, I do want to have a study session. Alan is, well, Alan's been talking about burn permits for the better part of five years, but we've met recently to discuss the burn permit process and how that can be revised, and he's got some good ideas there that we want to share with the board. So on Monday, we will have that discussion. That's all I have.
Okay. Casey, we'll just go right to you then.
Um, I don't really...
Okay, Brandon?
Quick update. The roofers just finished the roof of the jail last week, so that project is wrapped up, and they're going to do a final inspection on it tomorrow, and then they will be done and out of there. The Visitor Center roof will be starting probably within the next couple of weeks, pretty dependent on the weather, so we don't really have an exact start date on that, but that one's going to be starting here pretty soon.
Hey, if you're interested, and you all, or some of you were up there for the canvas the other day, but if you go to the historic courtroom, you can see the, it gives a great view of the job they've done on the roof. I don't know if any of you can recall what it used to look like, but it looks, I mean, at least to the layman's eye, it looks far better now than it used to. So you might get up there and check that out. Stop by Janet's office when you do and say hi, and...
I'll be there today doing vouchers, so...
There you go.
Sheriff? Sheriff, I was just thinking, what'd you look like if your beard ever caught Brandon's?
A couple of weeks ago, I had mentioned that during our promotion process, we always have people come up with ideas and their vision, and that the one that Sergeant Vega had was the SRO program, which is a temporary, part-time SRO program, and that's still going well. We also had had a promotion process in the jail, and one of our corporals that was selected in that process, Matty Gardner, had noted that she felt like we needed more, a couple, we needed to add some AEDs at strategic locations in our jail. We do have some in the jail, but she thought we would be better served and that we could provide better service if we had more AEDs. So they wrote a grant for that through Walmart, and I, we've been notified that we received a $2,000 grant from Walmart Foundation to fund that, the AED, the addition of the AED program there. So I wanted to say thanks publicly to Walmart for that, but also to give, you know, give props to our, to our people, because they're always looking for ways to improve the service we provide and do those things, and took the initiative to actually go out and secure the funding for it, too. So I just wanted to give them the credit for that. Also, last Friday, Lieutenant Lastwell graduated from the Command School, the Law Enforcement Leadership Academy down at Hutch. It's a year-long program, and he's assured me that he learned a lot, and it was a very benefi- And he's assured me that he's learned a lot, and it was a very beneficial course to him. I know that I still keep in touch with the people that I went through that class with as well. He will also be graduating from the Certified Public Manager part of that program up in Topeka at the, at the State House this month as well. So congratulate him on his accomplishments, and he's doing great things in the jail. We just look to see that continue. And this, this program and the training that we sent him to is, plays a big part in that. So I just say thank you for, for funding those type of training opportunities for our people, and I think that the county benefits greatly by what they, by all that information that we bring back, so. Other than that, if you guys have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer.
Are you still full, full?
Yes, I told you, the other day we had ninety inmates, we have eighteen farmed out, because ninety is way over max. So we're still a little bit over what our actual hard bed number is with what, with who we have in, you know, the numbers that we have in-house. But we're, we're working that right now. I had mentioned to you previously that we're trying to figure out why our counts are so much higher. Nobody, we can't, our people have bonds assigned to them, they're not high, they're not extraordinary bonds. They're not any higher than the, than the counties around us. We don't really, there's nothing to really put your finger on and say, this is, this is the deal. The, the studies that we're showing, though, is that a lot of, a lot of the crime that we have is, is, it's, alcohol and drugs play a factor in that. I don't know that we have a worse drug problem here than the counties around us. I don't know if it's, the prosecution's mindset is different, we don't really know. But we've been looking into it, trying to figure it out, and when it comes down to it, it's just we have people with, sitting in jail that have bonds that just aren't posting bond for, for whatever reason. So they're not required to, but constitutionally, we're required to set a, have a reasonable bond set for them, and that, and the courts are doing that, so.
Jeff, I have heard from several people, and, and I think this is a great thing, but that the county attorney and his staff are aggressively prosecuting and clearing their backlog that they inherited. Do you think that's playing a role in your increasing numbers?
The backlog part, probably not, but the current part could be, that could be playing, playing a role in that. Because, and we, and we work with them on a, on a regular basis on those things, so perhaps.
Well, and, and one thing I'd ask the board to keep in mind is, you know, when Jeff has numbers like this, you think, man, we're spending a fortune in farm outs, which is true, but that's also ninety bodies, each of whom may have health problems at any given time, that the county is ultimately responsible for paying, so it's tough. I mean, we talk about it all the time, but, and it only gets tougher as his numbers increase, so just keep that in mind.
Do you have regular training on these AEDs?
We have annual training, while we have the initial training when someone is hired, so make sure that they are CPR and AED certified. And that, those classes are done through, with the instructors from EMS. And then we have an annual training to keep everybody, to keep everybody up, up to date on those. We also have some other first aid training, we have people come in to give basic life-saving stuff with tourniquets and things like that. So training is a, is an ongoing, ongoing process.
What, what does one of those cost now?
I, I would love to give you an answer, Roy, and I, I don't really know, I don't really know right off the top of my head, but they're, you know, I know that they're around a thousand dollars, or just over a thousand dollars the last time that I had checked, but I don't know if they found a better price somewhere. We usually, we typically work with, we'll check with EMS, because they buy a lot of these type of things, but we also check with Advanced Correctional Healthcare, which is who we have our contract for medical services in the jail. And lots of times, we are able to buy, to buy this type of equipment at a better rate through our provider. And because the county does contract with them, EMS also has the opportunity to purchase through, through them as well. So the county can see cost savings, not just within the jail, with them.
I think we've had requests to put one in, in this building before, maybe two, but that's all.
Okay.
Thank you. Does anybody have anything else to share?
I have one additional thing that I would like to make everyone aware of. We have had a couple of people from my office, or people that we contract with, trained to deliver a program to the community, and we plan to roll this out early next year. It's titled The Parent Project, and it's to give parents skills in dealing with adolescents who are displaying some behaviors that may lead them to involvement in the criminal justice system. We understand that there are some other parenting skills out there, some, some classes and courses to help early childhood development and things like that. But we found a program through the state that specifically deals with adolescent behaviors, and we hope to roll this out as a prevention type of program to get parents the skills that they need so their kids don't end up with us in the system. And actually, I'd like to thank Dr. Cobb's for his willingness to step up and be a part of this program as we look to find community partners to bring this out to the community. So I just wanted to put that on your radar, we plan to roll that out, oh, in the next few months or so. Thank you.
Thank you. David?
Okay, Commissioners, yesterday we had a walkthrough on Highway 59 and Kingman Project. That, there's just a few punch list items left to take care of. They are working on striping hopefully today, and some ditch work on the east side of 59 along Kingman, and then some final signage. The signage probably won't get installed until next week, but we do expect that it will be fully open to traffic by the end of this week. Some of the last minute work that we've got to do, our folks are actually installing a entrance to some farmland on the south side of Kingman. We met with the farmer yesterday to discuss placement of that. Felt like it'd be a little cheaper for our own folks to, since we have the tubes in our yard, to put that in and cover it up. The contractor is already doing the ditch work, so it's just a matter of us placing the tube and getting it covered up. Once they're out of there, we'll come back and, and put the rock in and that sort of thing. So we worked with, with the contractor and the farmer to schedule and approve that work. I have to say that the HAMs company has done an outstanding job on this project. You know, there's been some things to, to work through, but there, there always is on these types of projects, but they've been very good about communication. We've had bi-weekly status meetings, so any issues that arise, we're able to deal with those immediately and kind of head them off before they become big issues. So I'm, I'm really pleased with how that project is coming along, and, and they, their, their goal is to be completely out of there by next, next Wednesday. We'll, we'll see if that happens, Mother Nature always has a say in how those things go, but they're gonna finish on time and, and get out of there, and we're gonna have a good project for it. The Iowa Terrace Project, we're still a couple of weeks away from being able to bid that project. So I don't really anticipate that work really getting off the ground until after Christmas, which is not ideal, but it is what it is. And once we get a contractor on board, I think they'll be able to move right along, provided weather conditions hold up. I have a pre-con meeting finally on the Finney Road Bridge, where the wing walls have fallen off. In fact, I'm gonna leave here and head to that. So I'll know a little bit more about the schedule on that project here shortly. But I expect them, once they get started, to move right along also. So we'll try to minimize the impact to the neighborhood by getting in and getting it done quickly. And then the Pawnee Road Bridge, we have a project meeting on Friday to see how that, that is going. The last time I was out there, things seem to be finally progressing at a rapid pace, primarily due, they, they finally had good weather to work in, and so, but that doesn't necessarily relieve them of the time commitment, they've got roughly thirty days to finish it up. We'll see if, if ADOT allows them some, some weather days on the end of that, make up for what they missed with the flooding that occurred. So those, those projects are, I think they're all in, gonna be in pretty good shape. Some of the things that our road and bridge crews have been working on since the last time you had an update, Virginia Road between Labette and Labette Terrace, the east side of that road coming down the hill. We had some, some spots that were three to five feet deep right along the edge of the road, created a kind of a dangerous situation. So in the last few weeks, we've gone in there and added material down in the bottom of that to bring the elevation up, and then we reworked the entire ditch area. So that should be in good shape by, by the time that it winters over and really solidifies over this winter, and be ready for next spring. So that, that's a much safer situation, and it looks pretty good, too. And then Cloud Road, from just west of Eisenhower, clear through Missouri. That, that stretch of road, about a mile and a quarter or so, had multiple washouts that had occurred this year, had some, some erosion in the ditches, just some significant, some very significant issues. So we, we, our folks have completely rebuilt that. In fact, they should be finishing up today, getting the last of the gravel placed on top. So they have, they reworked all the ditches, they reworked the road. We've had quite a, quite a number of our folks and a lot of our equipment out there, including our roller and our, excuse me, our sheep's foot, and our water truck, and various other pieces of equipment, working on that project. It included resetting or replacing, I think there were five, four, five, or six, I can't remember the exact number of culverts and crossroad tubes that have been replaced or fixed out there. We've also worked with the, the local farmer, there's some waterways through his property. We discussed working with him to make sure that the, we get positive flow away from our tubes through his property into the, the waterways like it's meant to be. A lot of that through the erosion just wasn't happening, and that, that contributed to the issues with the road. And the farmer recognized that, and has been gracious enough to work with us on that. So that's a good project, really make a big difference to the folks living in that area. And then also, we've worked on several minimum maintenance roads, it's harvest time, so farmers trying to get into their fields to, to get their crops out. We've been on, down in the Peoria Bottoms, fixing some, some pretty severe ruts through the flooding, and, and so we did a lot of grading work and added some rock down in there so they could, so they wouldn't get their equipment stuck, so they'd be able to get in, in and out. Also worked on Finney Road west of Oregon, for the very same reasons. We've got a few other locations that we're gonna be working on in the coming days for the same types of things. We fixed a few washouts on Haskell, east of 59, and then we've built, I think, four different entrances and replaced a culvert in the Arkansas and Thomas Road area. This is all in addition to, you know, the normal work that we do. We've hauled rock to seven of the nine blade districts. The two that didn't get their normal rotation, one of them was in District 408, which is where the Cloud Road project is, so that blade operator's been tied up there. And then District 407, that blade operator's actually been working on the Cloud Road project as well to help get that back in shape. So in the last two weeks, we've hit every district except for those two with our normal, normal rock rotation. The other thing I'd like to say is, to the public comments this morning, that project is not completed. We still have material to add, and then we've got to rock it. Depending on when they get done, today on Cloud Road, they were scheduled to move over to that, to work on that. So that's a project that is in progress.
I was gonna address the public comment when it got to my turn on Commissioner comments, but while we're on that, I'm just gonna also add in there that it's been a handful of people came in to talk about their roads and complain about their roads. A couple of them were on minimum maintenance roads, that was been addressed with them, I think they're happy about that. Also, I have had several people contact me, telling me that their roads are a lot better since they've been able to get on them and work in the dry weather. So I've had several people appreciate what's being done, and tell me that their roads are a lot better now than they were. Those people aren't gonna come in and come up and talk about that. So, you know, we hear a handful on the negative side, but there's a lot out there on the positive side, too, that you're not gonna hear from, that we do hear from. So just wanted to throw that in while we're on that, so.
There is a lot of good work being done, there is a lot of work still, too, dude, we know that.
Yes.
We're not ready to stop or slow down.
Yeah, we'll...
I think a lot of the loud voices you hear could be attributed to early political campaigning, more than legitimate, but I think there's other motives on some of the, some of the loudest ones. But we're not ready to quit, quit working hard either.
We've got, we've got a lot of work ahead of us. We're gonna be working on these things from, that occurred to us in this, this year, clear into next spring and summer. We recognize that. Cloud Road is, is an example of things that we are trying to do to be proactive, while the weather is still good, to make improvements. The, the other one that, there on Haskell that gentleman was visiting about, that, that's another example of a, of a problem area that we are trying to, trying to take care of as we have time and get to it. The roads are significantly better, the road surface. Now, you know, we can continue to have discussions on, on what happens on the edge of the road and in the ditches, but those, those issues are, they weren't created just this year. And so we are thinking about those things, and, and as we get time, we will make improvements.
Do you think about sitting down, maybe in a study session, and coming up with a, I mean, I see ditching as one of our maintenance items that we've just gotten so far behind on that, maybe you have a different perspective, that that's one of the big mountains we need to climb. Sitting down, setting an aggressive goal as far as ditching in the future, and looking at ways we can get that done, whether, you know, bringing in a private contractor for some of it, or temporarily hiring some staff, or, you know...
You know, in a...
And I'm sure you see other goals that, you know, maybe that's not the top of your list, but I see, you know, getting water off the road away and getting back to a proper ditching. There's just, there's thousands of motewellers, close, conceivably, there's twenty-two, if there's a ditch on each side, there's twenty-two hundred miles of ditch.
Right, so...
One percent of that would be a lot.
And I'm happy to do that. Just so you know, in, in normal years, we rebuilt, just like we did, you know, we, in my time here, we've rebuilt approximately two and a quarter miles of road. In a normal year, I'm told that, that that's anywhere from eighteen to twenty miles plus a year that, that get that treatment. So in those, in those, in those miles, they are rebuilding the road and doing all the ditch work associated with it. And so that's, that's not insignificant, but whenever you compare it to the twenty-two hundred miles, whenever you're only getting eighteen to twenty...
Oh, total road system, I guess, is eleven hundred, so you're getting...
So we're getting forty miles of ditch work done in a, in a regular year. It takes a long time to, to get there. And then we also, you know, we have a large number of miles that our road is the lowest... And then we also, you know, we have a large number of miles that our road is the lowest point around. You've got, on either side, you've got steep banks where there and narrow rightaways, where our road, the edge of our road is essentially gonna be the ditch no matter what. And so there's all kinds of reasons for what we have out there. But to think that, or to say that we're not doing anything about it and we're not making improvements is, is not, not accurate.
I don't believe it's be accurate either, but I would like to, I think we're behind, and I'd like to get us caught up to where we're not constantly struggling. We can...
We want to help you get it done.
Yes. And, you know, we, my philosophy is to be proactive in everything that we do. And that is not, you know, we can't continue to do what we've always done and expect different results. Everybody realizes that, including our staff. So they are open, we're open, and we have thoughts and ideas on how we can make improvements, and we plan to. But yeah, I'll, we'll work on something here over the next month or so and have something for you to, to review.
And if I could give some, and I don't think the board needs it by any stretch of the imagination, but just give some perspective. I mean, David is in his first year as our Public Works Director. He inherited a department that, in many ways, was ran well, but in many ways, needs a lot of changes. And so he's still in year one, which is not a lot of time. And what I normally tell my department heads is you take the first year to just get your feet under ya and learn the operation, learn what you have, let alone go out and make a bunch of changes. So he's in his first year. He's also had a historic weather season. I mean, this entire year has truly been historic in the amount of precipitation that we've had. So he's doing fine. And, and, you know, I completely agree with you, Cold. I think creating a proactive approach is fantastic, and I do think we need to be aggressive. I just think, I hope the public can understand where he's at. Have some empathy. You put yourself in that position, and, you know, what would we, what would you be doing any different than David Lee has done? And so I think he's doing a great job, and I think, I think when we get some breaks from Mother Nature, I think that we will start seeing the fruits of what David's putting in place, so.
Personally, I'd probably be under my desk cowering, but yeah. I did see this morning on my way in that they had, right around the corner from me, Eisenhower, that they were working on that, and I know just exactly where they're working on. So yeah, definitely moving forward.
That's another one that I haven't mentioned, but we've got another, we're working with the state on changing some drainage patterns on one of the fields and how to carry that water. And we've met with landowners, and we're working on a landowner agreement because we're gonna be working off right of way a little bit and getting the locates done. So here, later this week or early next week, we'll be adding some tube, or maybe two tubes, or upsizing a couple of tubes and adding an extra one in another location and getting in and cleaning out where we've had a ton of erosion and rock is washed into the field and into the creek and working with the landowner to retrieve all that. So we're, again, trying to be proactive to fix these locations. And, you know, the credit really goes to the, to the staff. They're the ones that live this every day and are dedicated to getting things done.
Betsy, you don't have anything. This is your opportunity. You wanna tell them that we canvassed the votes Friday?
Oh, we did canvass the votes, and everything worked out, and it stayed the same. We didn't change any races.
Okay. Last night, we also had our annual FCDC banquet. Everything went well. Paul, you have anything you wanna put out there for the FCDC?
I just wanna thank the county for the support, not just getting the dollars that you allocate, but...
And I know all of us up here have talked, and we're excited about the future with the FCDC. Okay, it takes us to commissioner comments and board reports. Who wants to start? Roy?
Well, I didn't wanna start, but I will.
Okay.
Last week, we went to the Kansas Association of Counties Annual Meeting in Wichita. I was a little disappointed in the meeting itself because we're under new, new leadership, and they kinda downsized on information they put out on each of our sessions. They didn't have a, the presenter was working off PowerPoint, but they didn't give the attendees the PowerPoint to follow along, so you had to take, had to take notes, and they talk so fast, so it's hard to take very good notes. I would've liked to have a PowerPoint on all the sessions I went to. One of the big things they emphasized was the 2020 census. They mentioned that several times, how it would impact you if you had an undercount census. If you just had a one percent undercount of the census over a ten-year period, would be about six hundred and four million dollars that the state wouldn't get. So it needs to be as accurate as possible when they start doing the census. Probably the, the important session I went to was industrial hemp production. Anyway, they got a department, Kansas State University, had a head of that area. And industrial hemp is, just listen to the requirements and all the licensing and how it works. It seems like it's something that's not, not for me personally, because it's too many licensing, too much licensing to get, too much information you have to give, too much requirements, and it's, could be very lucrative whoever does it, but it, industrial, any, I guess marijuana plant is very difficult to grow. It's so sensitive to any kind of herbicide, any kind of insecticide, so you have to come, almost have an isolate, isolated area to plant it. And then, then you have to have somebody to process it and to do the whole, the whole part of that, that sort of industry. It's, it's something that's very difficult, and a person really needs to look into it before they jump in and do the hemp. Let's see, I went to the K Camp and the K Works sessions, and both, both K Works and K Camp are in good shape far as their reserves versus what they, what they have to pay out every year. And they're getting more members every year. They picked up about three, three, K Camp and K Works both picked up about three members, three more states and a city. So they're multi-peril insurance companies. K Works works with, you know, people like David. They come down there and do safety inspections and that sort of thing. And they visited Ottawa eight times last year to look over their operations, see if they can see any safety problems far as equipment, and give classes to the operators on various things. And last year, K Camp spent a lot of money on weather-related claims. Last year was unusually, you know, weather-related, and we had national emergency declarations, but, you know, FEMA's not gonna pay for everything, and usually they don't. So K Camp comes in and does a lot of cover stuff, and we can see it on our roofs, that we've had hail damage on our roofs. And we've had enough claims that we didn't get any awards on either K Works or K Camp for claims. So we gotta try harder next year to get some of the awards they give out for no claims. There's more news on, or more rules on noxious weeds. They review the noxious weeds rules and regulations periodically, and they're gonna come out with the more, what the new rules are. Probably David will get those sometime before next season. And the other, other big thing was, K Camp comes out with their legislative advisory policy every year. Some of the new things that were significant was this year's home rules for counties. There's a big push this year, KC for a constitutional amendment to have, have a home rule for counties. And right now, we're pretty much at the mercy of the five big counties like Ceswick County, Shawnee, Wyandotte, and those counties, Johnson County. And, and since we're under statutory home rule, one, whatever the state legislature does, it fits all counties. So whatever, whatever those five big counties want, the whole state is gonna get practically because they have, they have legislative control in Kansas Legislature. So home rule be more, the theory is it could help smaller counties not have to deal with rules that the big, the big counties, you know, establish. Another big one is all the dark store theory. It's a process where these big companies, big box stores, casinos even, are being taxed by the local appraisers of fair market value, but the Board of Tax Appeals is using the dark, dark store theory where we're gonna evaluate you as, as if there was no store there at all. And that's what they've been using. A lot of, a lot of, a lot of counties and cities are getting their taxes reduced when they go to appeal significantly. And now the cities and counties are having to refund big, big money to school districts. The school districts have to, you know, give money back. I don't know if Mr. Cobb experienced that here in our county, having to give money back?
I get it.
Hopefully not too much. Let's see. Also, the policy statement recommends Medicaid expansion, more broadband access throughout the state, trying to get broadband to the rural areas, which is important to a lot of people. We experienced that last, last week. More money for mental health and jails. Also, they are recommending not to allow, when a person gets, gets arrested, goes to jail, they're sitting there waiting, waiting to get sentencing. They want their health insurance extended until they get sentencing. Right now, it's, as soon as they go to jail, they're, if they have some sort of health problem, then the county's been picking up the bill. So they wanna have it continued until they're getting sentencing. That's one of the initiatives, and I know Sheriff Richards worked, worked on this in the, in the legislature. And of course, they always have the, all state and federal unfunded mandates. They don't wanna have any of those unfunded mandates come down the pike without being funded if they wanna pass a rule that need to be funded. I don't know. I think I'm gonna quit now, let some of these other people do a little more, and I can jump in later, so.
Well, I did go to the Kansas Association of Counties Conference last, last week. Still sorting through the information. I do have some ideas that I'm gonna be bringing to staff, at least for us to consider. I'm not gonna expand on all of that, but, but it's not only just the meetings that you go to, but it's the, it's the networking with the other commissioners. You know, you know, somebody said yesterday, you don't have to reinvent the wheel, because a lot of them are already dealing with some of the things that maybe we are dealing with. And it is good to just kind of compare our problems with theirs, or compare what they're doing with what we're doing, and, and just get out there and meet people. We did do the campus on Friday morning, and that's always an eye-opening experience, how many boats that we go through there. Yesterday, I had to go to the summit that the Health Department put on, and it was very well-attended from people across the community. And basically, it was help in all policies, so, you know, just to consider whatever you do, it's kind of looking at the big picture, you know? It's not just focusing on this one little thing, but how is it gonna affect, you know, people? How is it gonna affect people's health and their well-being and all the things that are involved? And I think not only health, but maybe all of us expanding our, our viewpoints. And then went to the FCDC banquet last night, and we're all excited, all excited. All right, I'm good.
I've been to a handful of things that have been mentioned, so I won't go over those. I will say, went to the county summit, sat down, I was lucky enough to sit down with a handful of nursing students that Midge brings in as interns, and we were discussing vaping and, you know, the health problems it's causing, how it really is a pandemic among the youth. It's been proven it's been marketed to the youth. It's a real health problem. We've talked about it before. I think it'd be great if we could do something through policy at our level, but, you know, discussions we've had before and what I thought a potential policy would be, and then it was really interesting to hear these young nursing students and being youth as well, what they thought absolutely wouldn't work. Some of the things I thought, you know, we probably would end up on, they changed my perspective. I mean, that was, that was really useful. I mean, kinda wasn't completely the, got some other value out of that, as well as what you mentioned, Diane, so really enjoyed that.
I don't have any reports on Wellsville City, meaning, because I was at KC, and I'm not going, Roy pretty well went over, just that I, I found some pretty interesting topics. I attended the noxious weed laws, new regulations, employment law updates, met with the Secretary of Transportation, State Make, new lady that's, and census was a big topic. Met with our Foley Equipment, kinda did a lot of talking about their, their, the new equipment and what they offer, and our sales guy that we work with and everything. They were, worked, went to the hemp with Roy, and the main one I went to was, went to the one on wind energy and solar, because that's something that we here right now are, and the, the alliance that put it on really is, they're not getting money from it, they're just kind of the helpers and regulators throughout the state. A lot of different companies have board members on there, and if, if you're in... A lot of different companies have board members on there, and if, if your entities are interested and, and are, are doing something, they come in, they'll be out, Department of Agriculture's having them in in December, be out in the Ocho College, and they'll probably be given the same-
Pretty much.
-siminar that they put on. But it was pretty, very interesting that there's somebody there giving a talk that's not there to install or make money from it, they're there just informational-wise to help Kansas. The only other thing that I might mention that went to in the commissioner's meeting I didn't know existed, but there's actually, you can go get a degree in farming, but there's a school out in Riley County, and it's sponsored by, a gentleman was a Lieutenant Colonel in the military, out there and retired, and he got this idea, and they bought, they got together and they bought three hundred acre, north of Riley, the facility out there, and it actually has eleven-month course, and veteran, getting out of the service could actually go to school there for eleven months. They have housing and, and they can get a degree in farming. And so I'd really, and they have beekeeping school there, automotive school there. They divide the land all up in like thirty acres or forty acres, and they do a different crop on every one, not a big massive deal, but gives them, and they live right there on the farm for eleven months and get their training and their education. And I know, I mentioned here a while back, I know the RCND, the state, I helped get a twenty-five thousand dollar grant, and, and that's something I'm gonna talk to them over at their state meeting this weekend. Might be an interesting thing. I know I've been working with the Farmers Coalition to, to help sponsor some, some of the tuition for some of our local veterans coming back to go to this school, and so I'm gonna meet with them this weekend and talk about maybe possibly using some of that money to help with that. I attended the Health Summit yesterday, well-attended. Appreciate the county and Derek and the whole, and Midge and all of them for everything they did to put it on. I think the public was very appreciative. That's all I got.
Okay. Attended most of the same things, the conference and the canvas, the votes and so forth. I did go to Prairie Falls meeting back on November the seventh. Haven't had the meeting since. Attended all the same workshops that Roy and Dawn attended out at the conference. One thing I was thinking is Roy said that growers would be looking for isolated areas. I think as long as I can remember, marijuana growers have looked for isolated areas, but anyway. I, I take this as for some different reasons. They did explain that the plants are very susceptible to other sprays and other diseases from other crops, so that's why they will try to isolate their, their crops on this. But anyway, so with that, we have a commission study session next Monday. We'll have a commission meeting on the twenty-seventh before we go out for Thanksgiving, and if there's nothing else-
Larry won't be, Midge, you know, I hear that they'll be having their meeting Thursday night also as a continuance on the wind energy and solar.
And there is a lady coming, I talked to her on the phone yesterday, she's out of California, not sure exactly what's coming, but she will be there at the Plant and Commission to discuss the wind and solar energy. I'm gonna meet with her tomorrow afternoon before. She just wanted to visit about the prospects of what the, her company has to do with this and what's gonna go on, so we'll be talking to her tomorrow, and she'll be in sometime. I think she said she gets in today, will be staying over in Ottawa, and then be in here tomorrow, and then maybe interesting to hear what she has to say at the Plant and Commission meeting, so. Right, with that, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Over.
Have a motion or a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Betsy, we are adjourned.